The regular meeting for the Putnam County School District for Tuesday, April 5th, 2022 is now in session. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Bud McGuinness and then our invocation by the Reverend Carl Flack.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious Lord, we bow our heads and humble our hearts before you this afternoon. But come to, Lord, to first of all, say thank you. Thank you, Lord, for the quality of life that we so appreciate in our great nation. Lord, more specifically, we thank you for our district school board members who give of their time, their talent, and their treasure, day in and day out, to enhance education for all. Parents and students alike, Lord, we thank you. We thank you, Lord, for our teachers and counselors and school administrators, our superintendent, and our policymakers. God, help all of us to be a cohesive unit that we may continue to do your work in your will. Thank you, Lord, for all of the efforts that this school board represent, Heavenly Father, to legislate and to create and to enforce policy throughout our district so that we are shining examples to all. Lord, be in front of us to lead us, beside us to guide us. Hold us in the hollow of your hand, rock us in the cradle of your love, and help what we do bring joy to the hearts of many. Lord, we thank you for our students who have excelled in so many different ways and areas, and we thank you because if they don't work hard, they do not get the results. So thank you for caring, parents as well. Be with us, Lord, lead and guide this meeting as there are very important decisions that our school board members must make and give them the insight oversight, Heavenly Father, that they need so that everything is working together for the good of this district. Bless us now as only you can. Keep us, and we will give you praise and glory and honor both now and forever. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Flack.
Good to see you, Reverend Flack.
I would like to recognize the mayor of Placa, Jamie Watts. He's here today. Thank you for being such a supporter of the Putnam County School District. Now we will have our presentations. Ms. Caitlin Smith, girls, weightlifting will be first.
I'm not quite sure how this works.
Just go right over there.
Come over to the microphone, Caitlin, and like you were yelling at the umpire yesterday and just talk right up to it.
Okay. I'm not going to yell at you guys, but so we have two girls with us. They're two-time state qualifiers for weightlifting. Two of our girls who went this year, they did not get to make this today. So we have Camden Posey and Georgia Barton with us tonight. Do they come up here?
Yes.
Okay. We just have a really fun season. Weightlifting is rewarding for individuals as team as well. This year, we won all county. It was the first time in 13 years that Placa High School won all county. So it was really exciting. Last year, we missed it by one point. So we had, yeah, exactly. And then, you know, we just postseason, it's really hard for our girls to stay at the weight class that they need to in order to compete, but we had four girls this year that were just successful all the way around, and we had a really fun trip to Port St. Joe, and we're excited for next season.
Right. Congratulations.
Okay, they probably could. You know your total list, total weight? Sixty-five, two-seventy?
Two-seventy.
Two-seventy. Camden Posey, she was in the 169 weight class, and her total weight was 270 at state. And then Georgia Barton is in the 154 weight class, and her total weight was 285.
And your juniors or seniors? Oh, so you got next to a two ball, okay. Ms. Sharp, are you a weightlifting coach? Oh, my goodness, that's wonderful.
And now, our boys, Coach White, Josh White.
I gotta move the mic down. All right, okay, we had a, coming out of very weird years, all the COVID impact. We had some weird years. We had a lot of canceled tournaments, a lot of canceled meets, a lot of kids sick, a lot of injuries. You missed how many matches throughout the year?
A lot.
He missed a lot this year, so his wrestling count is down. He's the only one that stayed healthy of the entire team through two years. He's never got sick, is that right? Yeah, never got sick. Anyhow, we had a really good year as a team and these two individually. These are two-time state qualifiers for wrestling. It's been a long times, if you read the paper, it's been a long time since this happened, especially two times. We have a two-time placer. Last year, he placed six, and this is, let me see, it's McCade Harvey. He placed third this year. He had a record of 30 and three, so he did really well. We had Brandon, two-time state qualifier. Last year, got knocked out the first, first match, right, with a concussion. Didn't even get a chance to do anything after that. Came back this year, placed third with a record of 35 and seven. So they really, they did really well this year. Two things add to that. One regret, Brandon's leaving us, but he's going to wrestle at Kaiser University down in West Palm Beach. I don't know which one he's at. So he's going to go and continue his wrestling in college.
And that's Brandon Lewis.
Brandon Lewis here, he's going to wrestle in college. McCade, we get him back one more year. So we should have a good year next year. A couple other guys come on team, we should have a good year coming up. So they've done really well, and all I do is just yell at them. So that's nothing. They've done all the work. They've done all the work outside of practice. They've done all the work during practice, and they're continuing doing a workout a season during summer. So.
But you motivate them. You motivate them?
A little, a little bit, just a little bit. All right, it's Brandon Lewis and McCade Harvey. I want to thank you guys for support. And if you could, hey, we have a, can I put a plug in here? Okay, we have a summer wrestling program. It goes 4:30 to 5:30 for high schoolers and 5:30 to 6:30 for anybody under high school age at the high school every Tuesday and Thursday for the rest of this year. So if you guys know anybody who wants to join wrestling team or wants to enjoy wrestling, please send them out to us.
Josh, it doesn't seem like it's been that long ago since I watched you in.
Yeah, I know, but yeah, that was a lot, lots of this too.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought we had that, I thought we had those. I thought we had the school board policy banned FSU stuff.
Congratulations. Now we have Renee Huff and Amanda Bernie with the Avid Speaker Contest winners.
So each year, Avid hosts a national competition where students in Avid classes all across the world can submit a video of them doing a speech. The prompt asks about their experience in Avid, how it has impacted their life, how their Avid teacher has impacted their life, and those students get chosen and they actually speak at the big summer trainings that Avid has for teachers each summer. So this year, I asked our teachers, would y'all like to have a district contest? And they were like, yeah, let's do that. So we did. Unfortunately, there was an uptick in COVID right as all this was happening, so we decided to just do video submissions. Hopefully, next year, we can have finalists that come and do their actual speeches in front of the judge panel. So we had all of our submissions by video, about three hours' worth of submissions that the judges had to go through, and we chose a first, second, and third place. Jack Burning Cattle Company sponsored this, so he paid the prizes. I have a connection there. So third place for our contest was Joseph Donnelly from QI Roberts. And then we have Jonathan Givens. He's second place. He's from Placa Junior/Senior High School. All right, I'm going to do this name. She practiced out front. I used to do names at graduation, so. Milagros Richards. She was our first-place winner. She gets $100, and she's from Interlochen Junior/Senior High School.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Bernie.
Thank you. Ms. Bernie sent us through email their speeches, and they were very, very good, all three of them. You have an excellent, like, radio voice, by the way. I thought it was really good. And next, we have our special facilities funding presentation by Mr. Thomas Bowling.
Afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, sir.
All right, so let's talk revitalization again. All right, so up until now, everything has been kind of conceptual. We've talked about building schools, and we've talked about different funding sources, but we haven't really specifically spoke about a particular site or a particular plan. That all changes today. We're going to talk about Crescent City Junior/Senior High. It's our, it's our first special facilities project. I'll talk a little bit about how we chose that particular site, why we chose that particular site, special facilities, what's the cost, what's the district's responsibilities, why special facilities. So everything you ever wanted to know about special facilities and why we chose Crescent City High, I'll try and cover today. All right, so special facilities construction account is actually a Florida State, Florida statute, 1013.64, and I've got five or six slides that come directly from statute language, and I'll read them verbatim. But at the end of each slide, I'll attempt to take the legal, pardon me, Lex, out of it and just say it in everyday conversation, and then, you know, just kind of have a little bit of a dialogue. So if you have questions, or you want to make comments, or you need clarification on anything, just feel free to jump right in. All right, so. Start with purpose. Special facilities construction account provides necessary construction funds to school districts that have urgent construction needs but lack sufficient resources at present time and cannot reasonably anticipate resources in the next years. That kind of speaks for itself, but essentially, small and rural districts who aren't experiencing growth, who just can't afford to replace buildings that are aged out, there's a funding source for, for doing that. But there's some rules, and we'll talk about that right now. A school district requesting funding from the special facilities construction account shall submit one specific construction project, not to exceed one complete educational plant, the special facilities construction, to the special facilities construction committee. That just means you have to limit it to one site. If you think about Crescent City Junior/Senior High, if we had enough money to finish up that particular site, we could probably put some on the football field. There's a bus compound right there on that property, so if you have enough money, you can take care of all of that. But we couldn't go back to the Miller Middle School property and appropriate any of this money for. So it's for one construction site. All right, a district may not receive funding for more than one approved project in any three-year period, while any portion of the district participation requirement is outstanding. We wouldn't if we could, just because we can't afford it, and I'll, I'll kind of tease that out here in just a minute. The first year of the three-year period shall be the first year a district receives an appropriation. So we have to put some skin in the game. We have to pay a percentage of it, and I'll, I'll get more specific about that in a minute. But essentially, July 1st of 2023 is when we're anticipating the first payment. The first payment for us will become due at the same time. So we'll give money, but we'll get more back, and I'll explain it in more detail with this next slide. And on this next slide, I'm, I'm going to pause a little bit and just talk a lot about just the process itself. The district shall, for a minimum of three years before submitting their request and for, for a continuing period necessary to meet its participation requirement, levy the maximum millage against the district's non-exempt assessed property value as authorized under statute 1011.71 subsection 2, or shall raise an equivalent amount of revenue from the school capital outlay surtax authorized under statute 212.055 subsection 6. All that means, all of that said, means our cost is one mil for three consecutive years. One mil for us is $5,017,066. For three years, it's $15,051,198. So essentially, the cost for Putnam County School District to completely replace a school is approximately $15 million. Okay? So let's talk about which schools you choose for special facilities funding. Any, any guesses which schools we would choose for special facilities funding? Assuming we're, we're going to build nine schools, and we're going to use three for special facilities funding, which three do we choose? That's for you guys. All right, let me put it to you a different way. If it costs $15,000 to buy a Nissan Sentra, or $15,000 to buy Mercedes Benz, which one are you going to choose? The Mercedes. The same $15,000 will buy the Mercedes. So if our contribution is $15 million, it makes the most sense to build the largest schools, the most expensive schools with the $15 million. So we want our three most expensive schools to be used with special facilities. Our three comprehensive junior/senior high schools.
Junior/senior high schools.
Right. So we have four of those in the district. We have Interlochen High, we have Crescent City High, and we have Placa High, obviously, and then we have QI Roberts. Placa High School was built in 1977, so they're in the conversation. Once a building has been in service for about 40 years, you can start the conversation of taking it out of service. But Crescent City was built in 1967, and Interlochen High School was built in 1968. So just with that information, it seems like Crescent City High School would be the obvious choice because they're a little bit older, but in Interlochen High, you got campus two that was constructed in 1955, and it looks like a third-world country if you've ever been down in, in Interlochen High School.
Well, that was the old elementary school.
Right, and I was there for many years, and I complained about it a lot as a principal. So, so Interlochen High School is the, Interlochen High School is the obvious choice, right?
It would be.
Wrong. And, and I'm not trying to pick on you, David, just with the limited information that I gave you so far, I'm trying to trap you.
I go back to the growth rates and stuff, but I do remember Franklin Gauthier many years ago donating the property at Crescent City High School to, to have a high school. So that's kind of dates me.
Well.
Greg Gauthier, daddy.
When we did, to be eligible for special facilities, you, you've heard us talk a lot about rightsizing the district.
I got you.
So we've had to consolidate and close schools just so we can be considered. In that process, Interlochen High School became Interlochen Junior/Senior High, and it also has the Price Buildings. Now, Price was built in 1985, so the conversation didn't start about taking those buildings out of service until 2025. So the, the best ripe school for the here and now is Crescent City Junior/Senior High School. And then what would be our second school based on that information? Then it would be IHS. Exactly right, Ms. Geyard. So the order would be Crescent City Junior/Senior High, Interlochen Junior/Senior High, and then Placa High School, and, and then that would take us to QI Roberts. Now, QI was built in 2003. Those, that conversation didn't start until 2043. So the best, we're talking about QI, is maybe a remodel at the end of this revitalization process. So, you know, that's, that's kind of how we decided which schools we'd use special facilities for, and then the rank order that they would go in.
That family initially donated 20 acres to build that school, and then we went back and asked for 10 more to make it 30, so that at some point in the future, you could add on if you needed to.
Right.
We were thinking about, not Mariposa, but the Deltona development back in the day, you know, and that was looking at being a huge subdivision next to Clay County. So that's where that came from.
Thomas, do you know right offhand what year the new buil, new building at Placa High School was built?
Uh, not right offhand.
I was there too, but I don't remember.
I was, it was in, it was in the, it was around 97, 98, because I was.
It's interesting that you, you mentioned that, because, you know, when you start talking about which buildings come and which buildings go, some buildings are very close. So they're not 100% aged out yet. They're not, you know, they don't have 40 years of life. But when you talk about constructing an entire facility, you start making decisions, or, or the people who are coming, and I'll get to that in just a minute, you try and talk them into, or, or sell the fact that, you know, this, this site would be better off if this building were taken out. It is my desire to take out as many old buildings as we can and replace them with, with new buildings. And, and again, it doesn't cost anything different to do that. So if you have a, a building with one year left of shelf life, you want to get rid of it if you can. Yeah, it's kind of obvious. All right, so.
That's what we have you for, Thomas. You advise us.
Well, I got some good people working with me, so. All right, so let's talk a little bit about timelines. The, if, first of all, this, this is a little bit difficult to read, but the, the bar, the blue bar up top is, okay, yours may be a little bit different colors.
It should be behind your agenda, Thomas. They have a copy. You should have a copy.
I don't have it.
You can have mine. Anybody else not have a copy?
I don't have it. Polly and I didn't.
That little, the little blue bar up there, it's kind of hard to read that chart, but all those little letters to get three years, actually, it's more than three years, it's five years. In order to get that much time on one document.
I've got, I've got one. Sandy, you're up. We're good down here.
Okay, so that blue bar up there, and you may want to look up at the screen if you don't have it. Those little letters are the months of the year, so I could just kind of cram everything in there. But the, the four, the four most important dates are printed down at the bottom. So February 1st, this past February, was the deadline to submit an application to apply for special facilities. We obviously met that deadline. I wouldn't be standing here talking to you. All right, so the second really, really big date is DOE has 90 days from that February 1st, basically through May 1st, to pick a date to come here, and we present to them, and they decide that day if we will get special facilities funding. That day is Friday. They're coming here Friday morning. We'll do a PowerPoint presentation.
What time is that?
That is, Susan, help me out, 9:00, 9:30? 9:30, I think, is when it starts. Sure. This Friday.
Oh, this Friday.
This Friday. At 9:30, they'll come here, and then we'll do a, I'll, I'll do a PowerPoint presentation, and it will have the good, the bad, and most of all, the ugly of Crescent City Junior/Senior High School. Right. Because we're trying to sell that we need to replace the facility. I'll talk a little bit about the revitalization process, what we've done to prepare ourselves, the rightsizing, and then several pictures of just the condition of Crescent City High School and why it needs to be replaced. After that, I'll load them up in a van, those who are brave enough to let me drive them, and we'll go down to Crescent City, and we'll tour the facility. That'll be led by the school principal, Tim Adams. And then it'll be about lunchtime, and afterwards, after lunch, they'll come back here. I'll give them a place to debrief, probably our administrative conference room, and they'll make the decision that day. They'll in turn call Tallahassee, and I have been told that someone from DOE will contact me Friday afternoon and tell us whether we're awarded special facilities or not. So that happens this Friday. It's a really, really big day. I mean, worth, worth literally, literally millions of dollars is, is riding on that presentation. No pressure, huh?
And again, Thomas, that would, that would go to the legislature.
Right, and I'm going, I'm going to tease that out, yeah. All right, so, so the next big day is by June 1st, we need to have Phase 1 documents, and that's schematic plans, site plans, floor plans, front elevation. All of that will be developed by our architect. So I don't have to draw any of that.
So they've got that little short amount of time to draw up a architectural rendering?
Not the renderings, and I'll tease out a little bit. Just give, give me just a second, but the, the site plan isn't that big of a deal. It's not nearly as detailed as what you're talking about, Jane. All right, and then in July or either August, we'll be given a date, and I'm, I'm, I'm at this point assuming we're going, we're going to be awarded special facilities funding. We'll have to go to DOE to present, and, and that, the purpose of that is for rank order. DOE won't come to us for that one. We go to them. Rick and I'll go up to Tallahassee, and then we'll present. Rank order is important because in the following legislative session, next year's legislative session, they will appropriate dollars for special facilities. If four school districts are awarded special facilities, but there's only money in the budget for three, ranked one, two, and three get funded. The next one have to wait a year. So that presentation is very important because you want to be one or two, and so in the hopper, you'll make sure yours gets done first. Again, no pressure whatsoever. All right. Okay, and then let's go to the funding timeline. This is what I was talking about. Now, that, those, that amount, 46 million and some change down at the bottom, we fully anticipate that to increase. Remember, that's the buildings that have been what we call custodied, or they have enough age on them to be taken off the, the map automatically, because they're old enough. But with every school site, you have some buildings that, you know, are a little bit younger, and Crescent City has some. We fully anticipate them to take some of those out of play, too, and that'll happen this Friday as well. So that 46 million could very easily turn into 90 million, but again, the district's contribution is $15 million. Okay, so even though the price tag goes up, right, we, we still pay $15 million. And I, I mean, that's not chump change, I agree. But that is, the one said building schools was easy or inexp, inexpensive. All right, and then more on the timeline. If you go to the following page, around 20, around May of 2023 is the legislative session, and during that time, schematic designs will already be developed, and they'll kind of keep their, their eye and ear on the legislative session and see how things are going, and they'll really ramp that up. And that's, that would be our architect. And then design development, that's in about May of 2023. Construction documents are around January 2024. We'll select a contractor around. I think that's April. Is that April 2024? I think that's April, is that April 2024? All right, I'm gonna call that around January or, no, no, no. No, that's, that's, uh, actually December.
Well, you got to get the money through the legislature first and then worry about that.
Right, right. All right, so the, um, construction, jumping all the way down to the bottom because I'm having a hard time seeing my own lines, my little lines on my ledger right there. The construction actually should take place right around January of 2025. And we, it, and that's 24-month process. So, we look to occupy the brand-new, completely rebuilt Crescent City Junior Senior High School in the 26, 27 school year. And then we start all over again with Interlochen High School. Questions, concerns, comment?
I know how it, I've, I've been through it long enough. I, I understand how it works. I just, we're gonna have to really work with Bobby Payne and.
We've got, by the way, we have a lobbyist. I don't know if you want to talk about his services, but he's, he's got a track record.
And, and, uh, he's, he's had some, uh, experience with special facilities. Um, he'll be there when we do the, uh, rank order in Tallahassee. Um, and, and, you know, and it'd be important to talk to anybody you know in the here and now.
He is our lobbyist and not the Nefac lobbyist.
That's correct. He's, he's, he's hired by our district.
And so, actually, right now, Friday is it.
Mr. Superintendent, I would suggest that you tell Mr. Bowling not to mess up on this deal.
No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure.
I will say, let me just say while we're thinking, uh, Mr. Bowen spends hours and probably wakes up at night thinking about this. And I just want to commend him and his staff for, uh, all the work they put into this. You can't imagine how many hours he spent.
Sitting on the back row there.
Yeah, Travis Woods has, uh, spent a lot of time on this as well, so.
It's a big job.
Couple, 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 three years ago, both Travis and me had a little more hair on our heads.
Well, Travis's wasn't as gray a couple of years ago.
But I want to thank him and, um, this is, he's done a phenomenal job and I'm, I'm very optimistic.
Oh, I'm so impressed.
Yep.
Well, thank y'all.
Well, it, I get, I go back to thinking how the state changed the laws where you can no longer just have a facility and maybe work with a governmental entity and donate it and things that you can't let them sit still anymore because they continual assault on public schools, which is nothing wrong if you want to send your kids to a private or charter school. But local taxpayers bought.
Take our money.
Facilities and then, then you can't give them to different municipalities. And then I, I look at Jamie Watson, I think of the town, the, the, well, Laketown Hall is the old school. And, and, you know, when you go and look at just the old Johnson School that we gave the county, you know, you, you can't even do that anymore. It, it's just ridiculous. It's ridiculous. But that's the groundwork that Thomas and, and the environment he's working in. It's a, it's a changed dog-eat-dog deal.
It's a lot more complicated now.
Very complicated. But that's, you know, given the game plan, that's what we do. So, you're doing, I, I know you're staying up with it. I keep up with it.
You're giving it due diligence, so just be prepared. Uh, let's think about giving him Thursday also.
I like the way you think, Ms. Gill.
Do you need anything else?
Su- Susan, did you get that?
Thomas, did you expect it to come this quick for Friday then?
I knew they had, um, 90 days from February 1st, but they don't, they don't give you much turnaround time. They, it was a call last week.
I was gonna say, when did you find out it was Friday?
Late last week.
Then he really quit sleeping at night.
Wow.
Yep.
But just think about it. You will be prepared for Interlochen High. It would be a breeze after having gone through this one.
Yes, ma'am.
Trust me, it won't be.
We're gonna speak things that aren't as though they are.
Yeah, that's right.
Think of what's happened in, you know, this whole project started January a year ago, right? Y'all remember that day?
Talking about it, yeah.
I remember it.
Man, it's been full steam ahead and I, I can't be more excited. I mean, the next 10 years are gonna be.
Wonderful.
Crazy.
Yeah, really crazy, but it's gonna be a lot of good stuff going on.
Be something.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Bowling, if, if I'm, my math is correct, you would apply for the next special facility funding?
Right at the end of, or right smack dab in the middle of, uh, 2026.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe. I don't know if the, if, if we could get the process started when we're finishing that up. That's, I'll, I'll bring that answer back and exact.
Patrick can advise us on that. And we got a lot of people working for us that have a lot of tr- a good track record, so.
You know, I think about, um, the year Palatka High School, the new Palatka High School opened, was my first year of teaching. And I taught at Beasley, which was where I graduated from high school. And it was ancient, or I thought it was, because I was teaching in my mother's classroom that she had taught in for 40, 30-something years. And my dad was superintendent when that school was built, so I know it's old. So, I'm glad that was off the list. We don't have to worry about.
I used to play on the street up there where the school is when I was a kid. I remember it being built, so I am old.
This is exciting times for the school district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you, Thomas.
Um, we now move to the public comment section. We don't have any public comments, so we'll move to our public hearing. Lex, do you want to?
This student employment is weird.
This is a, uh, public hearing to delete policy 5895, student employment.
Is this roll call? Do we make, need a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the, uh, the deletion of policy 5895, student employment.
I'll second it.
You're gonna call this by district, Turner?
Yeah, he's gonna do a roll call.
Oh, yeah, sorry, 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 roll call. Uh, District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, now we'll move to our consent agenda. Ms. Gilliard, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'd like to pull item G3, 4, and 5. G3, 4, and 5.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Buckles?
Uh, I think I am fine. I came in quite early today and I'll save my remarks for closing remarks. Okay.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis?
I just had a question on H6.
H6? And Ms. Crawford?
I have nothing to pull.
And I also have nothing to pull, so.
Ma'am Chair, I make the motion that we accept the consent agenda item minus, um, G3, G4, G5, and H6.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Ms. Sandra Gilliard to accept the consent agenda minus G3, 4, 5, and H6. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Um, Ms. Gilliard?
Okay, my, my items and my reason for pulling is based on the meeting that we had, uh, with the expulsion committee. And the students adhered to what the, the plan we had laid out for them. We got notice from the school through Mr. Headstrom that those students had complied. And so, we're removing them from the list.
So, it would be student 3, 4, and 5?
And 5, yes.
So, this is the consensus of the committee to remove them from the list?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Most definitely.
Now, uh, Ms. Gilliard, are, is there anything that we need to replace it with? Do they need to be, um, is there a replacement or are they just going back to the school and we're just not gonna expel them?
Not going to expel, and I think they're going to remain in solutions.
Okay.
And the other part comes off the table.
I just want to make sure that, that we have the solutions part still in the.
Do we need, uh, is Mr. Headstrom, is he available?
Yes, well, Mrs. France was a part of it as well, our committee. And it was that if they complied to, to the, the, the criteria laid out.
I had a real conversation with Mr. Headstrom and he said that those particular students, um, he checked in with the, um,
He went there today.
Solutions, uh, teacher, and they had done everything that they needed to do.
Okay, but they're still in solutions.
In solutions for the remainder of the year.
But the other part comes off the table.
So, yeah, so we're, make it, we need to make part of the motion that those three students will still remain in solutions until the end of this year.
Okay, so, it, all right. I, I'm, I offer a motion that, uh, student number 3, 4, and 5 will remain in Solution Center at their schools because we don't, they're not all from one school for the remainder of the school year.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Sandra Gilliard to, um, accept, uh, student 3, 4, and 5 that will remain in solutions at their schools for the remainder of this year. And a second by Mr. Buckles. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Mr. McGinnis?
Oh, yeah. I just had a, a question. I was reading the, um, what we were proposing and it was back to the part where, uh, preschool, children of their preschool age that are homeless and they had made provisions. I was just wondering if that's ever. Homeless children in preschool. It spells out here if the child, I just wondered if that's, we, we are bound by this. If a child is in preschool and home, and in, and homeless, that it's the school district's obligation to transfer the child. I just, it never, it was gleaning to me and I've, I didn't understand.
Ms. France, do you have any information?
What, what, what is, what are you questioning?
It's just, it's, it's, it's policy, I understand that. It's protecting a homeless child. I didn't know, understand that that, the school district has spelled out that we are, wherever the homeless child was housed at the time, I mean, I'm all for it.
So, that's what we do with all of our families.
It came glaring to me about how many are now homeless in Putnam County because of the COVID.
We've got them.
Being, y'all were trying to collect all the students back, I understand.
So, part of this revision is that the state has come in and needs additional pieces um, to help meet their standard for the meantime. So, the piece that you're looking at is actually the piece that Neola wrote originally. It looks like it's not been updated since 2017. So, um, there's probably some, um, oh, no, I'm sorry, it was revised in 18, 2018. Nathan is here, um, he is the homeless coordinator. He could let you know, and he could let you know if we do transport any pre-K homeless students. Um, but right now, we do transport our pre-K students. And if a student was homeless, um, that would be an option. But he could talk to you to see, he could let you know if we do any right now.
I, I was just not aware that that is going on. And when it popped out like that, you connect all the other things.
But we do provide transportation back to the home school if that is what is best in the student's, um, academic career for the remainder of that year.
Okay.
We, we, we probably don't even have an accurate count in our county because there are people living in areas where they shouldn't be living.
Would you like Nathan to come up and discuss maybe the number of students he has identified?
That'd be wonderful. I mean, I heard it, it's just alarming.
It is.
So, active right now, we have, um, 196 that we have identified. And just for clarification, under McKinney-Vento, the, the definition of homeless is a little bit different than your average definition of homeless. Um, so some of these are a large, actually a large majority of these are people that are doubled up with other family members.
Like grandparents.
Grandparents, um, aunts, uncles, even just friends, whatever the case is. Um, and I didn't bring a breakdown of how many is in each section, but the majority are under that section of them. Uh, the rest are in hotels, motels, tents. We're seeing an increase of people living in sheds right now, um, is the fastest-growing area. Um, but there, there is, um, we averaged in, over the last, not counting COVID years, but before COVID years, we were averaging four, um, I want to say it's like 426, let's see.
You would think that with the way they're building sheds now, and I know you've probably seen them. They make nice little getaway camps or playhouses, but, but I've, I've got, but I see people living in sheds all throughout the county and it, it.
So, so our average was 472, um, pre-COVID. Um, last year, we ended with 356, um, that were identified. Um, we're having a little harder time identifying, um, um, with the way truancy was done and different things like that. It's a little harder to keep, keep track during COVID time. Uh, moving patterns have changed a little bit and that kind of stuff. So, we, we're doing some things to, to try to, uh, um, do a better job of identifying. And hopefully, um, next month, we'll actually send out a residential questionnaire to the whole district, to every single student. Um, so we're working on the grant, get that approved. Um, we hope to have that approved here in the next couple of days.
And tell us your name?
My name is Nathan Edens. I'm the coordinator for homeless education.
Nice to meet you.
Um, and as far as the preschool thing, it is, McKinney-Vento does require us to transport her to school of origin. Um, as of right now, we do not have any pre, uh, pre-K that we are doing that with that I know of.
That's why it's so imperative that our, and I know the superintendent has met with the sheriff on trying to work with bus drivers to keep them cognizant of whoever's around bus stop in our, throughout our county because we have just, it's, it's so vulnerable to kids who are in, in homeless situation. All kids, but particularly those who, who just are really struggling. But Rick, I know you'll continue to get with the sheriff and law enforcement entities about keeping them safe.
Well, I want to thank Nathan for being here. He works in our federal programs office and oversees homeless, so appreciate you being here, Nathan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I cleared it up. Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the, um, H6.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept item H6 on our consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Now, we will go out of regular session and into emergency session. We have one item, extra hours for custodian at James A. Long.
Madam Chairperson, I make a motion, we approve the extra hour, um, for the custodian at James A. Long. The explanation, time-sensitive.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandra Gilliard to accept the extra hours for a custodian at James A. Long. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. We have no unfinished business and we have one item under new business, the consensus to advertise instructional materials, adoption of mathematics.
Roll call, Lex?
Yeah, we could do a roll call on it. Um, District 1?
Most definitely.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Advertising.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Absolutely.
All right, uh, 5 is here.
Um, okay. Yes, it was an awesome presentation. Um, and now we'll move to our board reports. First up is Ms. Jane Crawford.
I only have a couple of things this week. Um, I would like to give a shout out to Deasia Evans. Um, her dad, Dr. Gilbert Evans, is my former boss at, out at the college. And, um, she is a student at QI Roberts and she was chosen to represent Putnam County as the academic star in STEM fields. And I think they went to Orlando and she was honored there as our Sunshine State Scholar, which is, is a big deal. So, congratulations to Deasia. And a shout out to Jack Bernie for sponsoring our avid speaker contest. Um, I know how that happened.
I bet.
And, um, last but not least, I want to say goodbye to Lex. Sad that he's leaving, um, and to thank him for all he's done for the district's school board while he's been, uh, in Palatka and with us. Congratulations. That's all I have.
Okay, then we'll go to Mr. McGinnis.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I want to congratulate the winter sports winners again. And the, um, avid students that, uh, did that, their, uh, presentation, especially Ms. Richards. And the, um, avid students that, uh, did that, their, uh, presentation, especially Ms. Richards, uh, kind of going in hand in hand with the, I was just thinking about her video, um, uh, and the homeless thing too. Kind of, if we don't have these kind of programs that Abbott and our school district, uh, provides, I really don't know where our students would be. I mean, that, to me, it just.
In schools and yourself.
It, it just, it shines for them. So I'm just really part, I'm glad to be a part of that too. Uh, my shout outs going to all the people that work in the schools and feed the need, our local effort here and, uh, the people that work in the schools that do the food, food lockers and, uh, they, you know, they don't get a lot of acknowledgement, but they, they're doing a, a great service. And, um, attended the, uh, the, uh, county baseball tournament. Palaka was the final winner. Um, I've survived, I think the nose, nose seeds are more stronger in St. John's County because the back of my neck is just eaten alive, but, um, uh, and attended the Eddie Mooney Awards, which is very wonderful moment. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Um, Mr. Buckles?
A few things. I want to start with, uh, I'm gonna miss Lex.
Yep.
Now, you know, Charlie, he's lucky because, uh, if I had my druthers, I'd probably have you sitting there pretty regular. Well, I can't, I can't get, you know, I, I just can't always get the right advice when I need it, but I appreciate Lex being available. I did leave Lex with some lingering questions and the superintendent has been very helpful as well on, on signage at the schools as we pass on to whoever represents us.
Have we found out anything?
Well, there's more, that questions that, you know, I've got other things that go with that. For instance, if I, I've, I'm, you know, questions that I'm concerned about, like if, if a principal decides to have a donor that's a, want to be a business partner, is, does the principal have the final say? And, and I, I'm of the opinion they do as long as it's congruent with, you know, school board policy and the law and, and all, but that's, that'll be something that I'll pass on to whoever comes back because you get people who may not like a sign and then they try to find another entity to come and, and advertise that you absolutely wouldn't want anything to do with. So we'll cross that bridge at another time. Uh, but Lex, we're gonna miss you badly and, uh, but I know you're just gonna be a stone's throw away, so, uh, you come by and see us anytime. That'll be great. Uh, I would like to, and I go through this every year, but it's that time of year. It's, it's graduation season coming. I, I don't know what, what we've got planned, our principals have at our high schools, but I would love to see them consider bringing some wrecked vehicles on the campus to show kids, to try to get their attention because it never fails that we lose students, uh, during graduation season and as they. And it's just, just a horrible situation to have to deal with, but that's what we deal with. So, uh, I'll pass that on to superintendent to meet with his principals to tell them if they need help or board approval to drag a vehicle on campus and so be it, you know, we'll, we'll be in favor of that as well, but, uh, last but not least, the, uh, I was very pleased with the curriculum adoption today. I was, it, it just amazes me where we've come with, with Wi-Fi and cell phones and, and now that we've got a, a program that is amenable to a, a very rural district like ours where a kid can be working on a project and, and leave and get back into a, uh, an area where they have signal and, and get it completed, makes, makes a lot of difference for young people. But with that, I just, it was particularly nice to see Carl Flag today. He has done so much for this county in his life. And, uh, I go back to his, his mama used to have to get on to me when I was in Cub Scouts because I wasn't always so good, but she was a, she was a wonderful lady and you come from a fine family. It's good to see you and to have the mayor of Walaka, pretty, pretty neat. Watch out, Thomas will come back and try to take that school back from you. That's an old one too, but, uh.
Yeah.
I, I think that, you know, it's gonna be interesting, uh, with the change with, from Lex, so we'll see what, what occurs there, but I, that, I'm, I'm covered up in softball and, and all the activities going on right now, so I'm doing my part, eating boiled peanuts and keeping the concession stand going. That, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Ms. Gilyard?
Just ditto to, to what I've heard in regards to Lex. We have an opportunity to talk after one of our expulsion meetings and, and I do have an open invitation, so if I show up, don't call anybody else. Just want to commend our executive secretaries for what they do, uh, personal experience with COVID and how they, they just seem to hold it all together. You know, two, three people are out with COVID and boom, they're calling, uh, the people not to come to work and calling somebody to come in in their place and, and sometimes we just don't say thank you enough. You know, I know their, their principals appreciate it, but we appreciate it as well, what they do. Uh, to those that are retiring, uh, to Ms. Kristy Lowe, Peggy Shroud, I had the opportunity, she trained me out at Off Willow when I was in the assistant principal there, uh, to Joan Cola and Melissa Hale, uh, they are retiring after having given many years to our students here in Putnam County. We salute them and we thank them for all that they have done. And to our superintendent, you know, um, sometimes people say as the head goes, so does the tail. I don't know if that's true, but anyway, he got an opportunity of a lifetime to be invited, uh, to go to El Paso, Texas, uh, and like my mama used to tell us, uh, leave a place in, in, in the way that you would be invited back. So did you leave it so somebody else can get invited?
Yeah, I left there in a herd too because it was, it's not our kind of weather.
Okay, all righty, but, but we, we so appreciate that and the Palaka Daily News for their coverage of it. Our children need to see that it's okay, that something good can come out of Putnam County as we have shown time and time again. I did have the homeless policy on here, uh, the part, the checklist that they had to go through and check off all these zillion things and it looked like the reviewer did not have anything negative to say about us and I put a note here, commend those responsible. And now I have a face to go with one, I'm assuming was responsible for this and we thank you again for your work. Mr. Bowlin, we thank you for, for what you're doing and, and stand both focused and for our avid instructors. We thank all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilyard. I just have a few things. Ditto, um, Mr. Bowlin, you've done a fabulous job and, um, Jen Azula, wow, that was amazing. I was a child that before math class, I almost would get a stomach ache because I was terrified of being called to the whiteboard to do my problem alone. So, wow, um, well, yeah, we did have whiteboards. I live in Alachua County.
We hit marbles.
Me either.
And, um, Ms. Gilyard, when I was first hired, uh, I was told by, uh, I guess somebody in the school, they said the two people that you really want to, um, get on your side are the executive secretary.
Absolutely.
And, um, the bookkeeper because you don't want to ever go wrong there. So, um, so they do do a fabulous job. And Ms. Holly at Crescent City Junior Senior High School is amazing.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Flag, thank you. I just texted him out of the blue and he just says, yes, I can do it, you know, it's, it's great to have someone you can call on.
Absolutely.
And, um, and let's see, uh, I do want to mention, although he was not a student in our school system, um, the little boy from Crescent City, uh, there was just a huge outpouring of community support and not just from the South End.
Yeah.
From, you know, Palaka, a lot of prayers went up. Um, unfortunately, it, it was a sad end, but the community really has ra- rallied behind that family. Pastor Flag has been very involved. Um, so, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't forget that family. They have another child and, um, I can't imagine having to deal with that.
Holly, Holly, being that you mentioned that, I, I, and Rick's here, there, uh, years ago, we lost a student. Ms. Gilyard, one of her children was murdered by another classmate and found in a, in an abandoned septic tank years ago. And we formed a group of administrators who volunteered that if the sheriff department called, we would get together and we would go look for missing students because we had another student come missing in the Ravine Gardens that we had worried had fallen into the water plants, uh, down, down there years ago. But it might be something you guys consider, just putting together a quick response team now that we have guardians that can, you know, are legally allowed to do certain things that if they're, want to, they could be at the, the beck and call of any law enforcement to help looking for one of our students in Putnam County or children.
Good idea.
That's just something, you know, you guys might consider.
Yeah.
That is, that's a great idea. Um, and since we last met, we, um, the fair, I just want to say, you know, the commitment of the students is amazing, but the commitment of the parents is, is just truly amazing and, um, so shout out for all of the parents of fair, fair students. And then, um, last night I was sitting at the Crescent City, uh, Junior Senior High School softball game and I could hear cheering over on the baseball field and it was the seventh and eighth grade team was over playing baseball. And I thought, now that's, you know, that's great. The, the Varsity and the JV, I think were traveling and so they got to play on the field and, um, I just, I also had boiled peanuts for dinner last night with a pulled pork sandwich. I don't know how that went, but, um, I just thought, you know, that it, that's part of, of why we re- revitalize the schools so that it gives those seventh and eighth graders the opportunity and, and I think the more kids that are involved, the better school is for those children.
Absolutely.
You know it.
So, I, you know, I think we're, I know, I don't think we're on the, the right path and I thank our leadership, Dr. Serency, Mr. Bowlin for really, um, Travis back there, if he's back there.
He slipped out.
You know, just, just for doing what you have and the vision that you have. And that's all for me. At Lex, also thank you for always being available. You know, you, you always, you always return my phone calls. I, I really appreciate that. Thank you. Now it's your turn.
It's my turn. All right, well, um, I, uh, have recently been, um, asked to be the deputy county attorney in St. John's County. So I will start that, um, uh, effective April twentieth. So I'll still have a few days here to wind down and, and have projects and make sure things get handed over. And, uh, with all good news comes some bad news and the bad news is that you get Charlie Douglas back again.
Do we have to?
I'll keep him straight.
Yeah, uh, the, uh, but the good news with that is, is that he does know what he's doing and he loves this county.
Yes.
And, um, we've, uh, had a lot of expansions. We've, we've got the, the new office across the street. Um, we've got nine attorneys in the firm right now and even though I'm leaving, I believe we're set to hire two or three more attorneys.
Cindy retired.
And Cindy retired, but that's, I already had taken that one off. So, so we're looking at hiring two or three more and we've, it's just been blessing after blessing for us and we really do appreciate it and, um, we treasure our partnership here. Um, you know, we've got more than enough attorneys that will be able to accommodate all the different things and make sure you're well supported and that, that people are here to do office hours and work with all the staff. Um, you know, one of the things that I want to say is that this county is blessed. Um, you've got wonderful leadership, um, but you've got an enormous staff that's, that's beautiful and caring and that works hard every day to make schools happen. And it's, it's an amazing thing that people take for granted because we all went to school and, and so we just think that, you know, the same old thing that, that happens should just happen every year. And as we saw today with the presentation with, with the, uh, curriculum, it takes a lot of work to get state of the art stuff and to be top of the line and we're doing that here in a rural county. And, and I grew up, I didn't grow up in, in, um, Putnam County, but I grew up in a rural county too and this feels like home. And it's nice to see that a rural county can succeed and they can create all sorts of opportunities for their children. And this board here and the staff that's out there and the parents that help them, they all make that happen and they've put Putnam County on a trajectory that's just wonderful and I'm, I'm very sad to not be able to finish up a lot of the projects that we've got going. They're just super exciting. So, thank you guys for the opportunity. I, I am a friend, um, and, um, I'm a friend to everybody on this board and I care for you all deeply and anything I can do, I'm a phone call away too and if Charlie didn't take good care of you, let me know.
What about the signs?
Signs, I'm, that is a project I am still working on. I will get kind of packaged up so that we have steps. So that we know that, um, this, the principals can do this. There's, I, I think there's going to be some multiple steps to the things and options of things.
I've got a couple of additional questions that involving some things that have occurred that the superintendent has apprised me of that I won't bring up here.
Yeah.
But, uh, you just need to, and you're probably aware of it.
For more than another week, so if we can still have a co- a conversation and talk and I can have that packaged up and have Charlie know. I've, I've actually worked on some of that already.
You probably.
So I think I know some of it, so.
Hey, can, is there any way you've got pool, the sheriff department in St. John's County that you can keep Jane from bothering me if I go to?
Actually, I'm friends with the sheriff.
Okay, thank you.
That just doesn't even make sense.
Every time I used to go to the con- condominiums over there and I'd run into her, she'd want to know how much her pay raise was gonna be and catch me in front of her. She was paying, she was terrible. I know, I'm off the wall, okay.
Something wrong with you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis.
We're glad you're, we're glad you're close.
Dr. Serency?
Yeah, that, before I talk about Lex, I want to talk about, um, Susan here. Y'all know she just put in a year with us last month.
A year? She was going somewhere, you scared me.
Yeah, you just, you just made my heart beat.
Talking about executive secretaries, she's an executive assistant, but, um, I asked her a minute ago, did, because we normally let her clear everything. I said, did Lex get permission to leave from you? And she said, no, so, you know.
It's not a done deal yet.
It's not a done deal till Susan says it's done, right?
We're not real happy with it.
And I want to thank Susan for her, uh, service here a year and it's, it's been a good ride and keep getting better. So thank you, Susan. And, uh, I can't say enough about Lex. He's been, um, a great friend, fellow Gator, okay? We tell Gator stories all the time.
That's even better.
Yeah, that's even better, so, um, of course Charlie's a Gator too, that helps.
Yeah.
Yeah. But Lex, Lex is really a trusted friend and we can, we were just, our staff was talking about it, we can call him up anytime. And he'll, um, you know, a lot of times he won't tell you what you want to hear, but he'll tell us what we need to hear. And, but he'll put it in such a way where you feel supported and that type of thing. So Lex, you, we're sure we'll get a mission. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, a couple of things I want to read. First of all, um, this week is assistant principal week. So there's a week for everything, but hug your assistant principal when you see him and, uh, thank him for their service. Being a principal, former principal, assistant principals really run the show. They do things. They do it all. So, not that principals don't, but assistant principals are very valuable. Uh, I do want to, um, remind you of a couple of dates here. Uh, gonna ask that, um, on your calendar, we have decided to cancel the June twenty-eighth board meeting. There's a conflict there and of course, we talked about putting in the next week, but that's July fifth. Nobody wants to be here July fifth, but I think we can get everything done with one board meeting in June and I believe we have one in July too, right? And that's normally what we do in the past too.
This is in June.
So June twenty-eighth board meeting will cancel. Also a reminder, our next board meeting here, April nineteenth, is a six P M. Board meeting. Six P M. We try to have several of those a year. I want to read a statement that, um, was given to me by Twenty First Century Learning Community. The Putnam County School District is in the process of applying for a Twenty First Century Community Learning Center Grant for the following schools: Middleton Bernie Elementary, James A. Long Elementary, Robert H. Jenkins Junior Elementary, William D. Mosley Elementary, Melrose Elementary, Intralocken Junior Senior High, Crescent City Junior Senior High, and Palaka Junior Senior High. We are encouraging stakeholders to participate by providing input on the grant application by contacting Michelle Higgin. application by contacting Michelle Higginbotham. And her email address is m.higginbotham@my.putnamschools.org. The grant submission deadline is April 15th. Also, speaking of deadlines or applications, we've opened up the application or nomination process for product to Putnam. And that's an exciting time of the year. And there's information on our website and our Facebook page. But, this is a time where you can nominate someone who has graduated from a Putnam County High School and who is either working or serving in our county currently, okay? We have so many people, the more we nominate, the merrier. But, we always recognize the, the recipients at our graduation ceremonies. So, that's at their alma mater. So, that's always a good time. One, I'll, I'll finish up by saying, we are very honored today to have some distinguished visitors from the nation of Israel. They actually came to our CLO Verturf Administration Building, and we presented to them on some of our STEM activities. And they were actually, it was about 15 of them, but they were all principals from Israel. And Mikey Helms, I introduced it, but Mikey Helms presented the information. And I understand they asked a lot of questions. So, they're very interested in what we're doing here. And for them to come across the ocean to visit Putnam County, it's pretty cool.
They, they are our best friends.
Yes, absolutely.
They're wonderful.
So, always looking forward to strategic partnerships, and we'll definitely continue that partnership. They visited Mosley and QI Roberts, I believe. Did I leave any schools out?
That's a spectrum there.
At least those two schools.
Ms. France was talking. She didn't hear you.
Those two schools.
They both visited both Mosley and QI, I guess.
Right, just want to make sure. So, we'll get a report on that. But, Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, anyone have anything else? This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.